We are conducting this meeting by teleconference and it is being recorded. The agenda for this meeting is on the city's website at www.santana.org. Scroll down to just below the picture of the city council. Click the blue bar titled "Meeting Agenda and Minutes." Once you access the agenda for this meeting, there are instructions to listen to the meeting and make a public comment. Members of the public will have the opportunity to make comments twice during this meeting. The first opportunity for comment on the agenda items will follow the roll call. The second opportunity for comments not related to agenda items will be near the end of the meeting. Even though we are not physically meeting together, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance wherever you are. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Beth, please call the roll.
Chair Carpenter?
I am here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes, I'm here.
Member Landeverde?
Here.
Member Leo?
Here.
Member Lugo? Member Pereira?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This is a time for public to comment on the agenda items. If you wish to comment on agenda items, dial *9 to request to speak. Staff, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak on agenda items?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Our next item is number one on the consent calendar, approval of minutes from March 11th. Do any members have edits to the minutes? Do we have a motion and a second on the minutes as amended?
A motion to approve, this is Johnson.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. This is Chris Leo.
Thank you. Staff, call the roll.
Carpenter? Chair Carpenter?
Approve.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Landeverde?
Agreed.
Member Leo?
Yes.
Member Lugo?
Approved.
Member Pereira?
Yes.
We have, it passes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is number one on the business calendar, a Measure X review update from staff. So that is over to you guys.
Okay, thank you. This is Kathryn Downs and the committee has received Measure X revenue information by email and in your agenda packet for today. In summary, we have received $58 million for 11 months of activity beginning April 2019 through February 2020. We expect to receive actual figures for January through March at the end of May. The California stay-at-home order began on March 19th. Just to give you some impact, there will be 12 days of impact in the, in the first quarter. We are expecting a $1.5 million loss for April through June. That's roughly equivalent to 10% of our quarterly revenue. For next fiscal year, we're expecting a $2.3 million loss. However, the longer coronavirus impacts the economy, the more likely our estimate will change. That concludes my oral summary and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Kathryn, this is, um...
May I ask a question?
Okay.
Are there any questions from the members?
This is member Lugo, I have a question, if it's appropriate time.
Yep.
Can you tell us a little bit about how the estimates were made? In other words, the loss?
Absolutely. The city has a sales tax consultant that has been working with the city for quite a few years now and the company name is Avenue Insights. It was formerly Muni Services. They are one of the major sales tax consultants in California. So this is pretty much most all of what they do. They advise a lot of different cities and do sales tax analysis for those cities. They've, they've done a very thorough analysis for Santa Ana and this is their projection. We have very good experience with Avenue Insights in the past where they've been right on the money when it comes to their sales tax estimates. So even though this is something that's completely new, we haven't seen this before, this isn't a normal recession, they've went through business by business, sector by sector, and, and done an analysis. So we feel pretty good about these numbers, but the, you know, none of us have a crystal ball. And so as they get more information, as we get more information, we'll continue to work through analysis together and we may be updating our estimates.
Well, I'll, I'll be honest, that number actually seems relatively low. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to hear that it's as low as it is. I would think it would be a lot higher.
Okay.
So this is Tim, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So how, how, how long is the consultant expecting the, the stay-at-home order or the impact of this to go, you know, how far into the next fiscal year, you know, trying to gauge, gauge what their projections are based upon, you know, in the, with the stay-at-home order?
Right. It's impact through the summer.
Summer, okay. And what was the revised, the adjusted, I think at our last meeting or maybe the meeting before, possibly even at city council meeting or budget meeting, I think we had, you had revised upward slightly the $60 million 12-month figure for the Measure X funds to maybe like 60.5 million is the number that kind of...
It was 61.1.
61.1.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And did we, did we appro, or did the council appropriate that additional 1.1 million beyond the 60 already?
I believe that they did. Sergio, do you remember?
Yeah, yeah, pardon me. This is Sergio Bedal, Assistant Director with the city. The council, the council just, we provided them our estimates, but they didn't do in a, they didn't appropriate funds, they didn't appropriate or program those additional funds.
At mid-year?
Yeah, at mid-year. They, it was, they just took our estimates.
So they took 61.1 as an estimate and so essentially appropriated the additional 1.1 at mid-year budget review?
Yeah, let me check on that. I'm not so sure. Does somebody else have a question that we can, we can be considering while I look this up?
Executive Director Downs, just so you know, you're showing your screen.
Yeah, nobody can see my password, it was all asterisks.
Yep.
This is Commissioner Leo, I have a, a question about, um, what, what, when they project, so as Commissioner Johnson said, stay-at-home order, let's say the stay-at-home order goes through Memorial Day, right? And the governor begins to open up things, but things only open up 25%, 50%. And then will the adjustments that be made during the, during the course of this, will this be based upon, um, let's say restaurants open up only 25%, right? So the question is, how will you calculate the revenue, the, the proposed revenue as you go through the budget process? Because my guess is you'll have to do a budget coming up with certain cuts and certain discussions about how you're going to pay for it. And then you're going to have to do almost quarterly corrections until you get to a number that works. So I'm just wondering how you plan to work through that because, you know, I can use my industry as an, as an example. We've opened back up for regular surgeries, but yet, once we go through the backlog of surgeries, we don't know if people are going to come back. So that's a, that's a question. I'm wondering how they're going to, I guess, incorporate those assumptions into the numbers. Any idea how they're going to do that? I mean, that's, it, obviously it's all about assumptions.
Right.
It, it, it's a question of business, um, and comfortable of business. If, you know, I, I think about the number of restaurants in Santa Ana produces sales tax, but yet, if they're doing takeout now, they're doing what, 10%, 20% of what they used to do? That's what I wonder, like, how, how they're going to calculate that going forward? Because if we have to go through this through January...
Right.
You can probably make, Kathryn, you can probably make an estimate on what the budget may be by January.
Oh, absolutely.
You, you have some idea if we, it, it will be, it will be horrific, but you can make a guesstimate on what we're going to see.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out is like, as we go through this, are we going to have monthly corrections? Are we going to have quarterly corrections? And what are the assumptions to go into it?
They, they typically give us quarterly corrections and because that's, that's how they get the data from the state, is on a quarterly basis.
Okay.
And, and that, you know, they, they get a vast amount of data from the state. And as soon as they give us information where it, you know, things are, things are looking different than what they had expected, I'm, you know, I think that the best thing for me to do in, in this kind of environment is just to immediately take a staff report to city council with some recommendations.
Yeah.
You know, like if they were to come back and say, whoa, we got some more data and we're, you're going to get $2 million less. I mean, I think it behooves me to immediately report that out to city council and ask, and make some recommendations about how to continue to shore up the budget each time we get an adjustment like that.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, no, I just, I just know that we're working from, we're working from a position that this, if we're lucky, we work from 2008 recession numbers. If it's worse than that, then that's a whole, then we got to come up with other things. That's why I'm trying to figure out as we go through this, because we're going to meet quarterly as well as a group. So the question for us is, okay, let's say sales tax is down, how can we best assist you and assist the council in making recommendations? So that's kind of what I'm thinking about.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
And to go back and answer Vice Chair Johnson's question, it looks like they did do some appropriation adjustments on the 18th with the mid-year report, but they were very tiny. You can see they're repairing city hall windows, homeless cleanup and police tech equipment. And the total on that is 179,000.
Another question, how did, how do we expect the, or how, I guess more from an accounting perspective, how do we record the, the, the sales tax deferral program? So meaning that, you know, as you, as you reference in your second point on this, on this slide, slide 10, so businesses have the ability to be able to, it's generally for smaller businesses, so it may not be a material amount, but they have the ability to defer paying their sales tax? Or do we record that in our current fiscal, in the fiscal year that we, that it's, part, you know, the sale was made? Or we, do we record that when we receive it, you know, three months later?
When we receive it three months later, because we're on the modified accrual basis of accounting, we have a 60-day window to accrue our revenues. So that means that by the end of August, if we haven't received it, it does not go on the 1920 books, it goes onto the 2021 books.
Okay. So that, that's going to have a larger, I'm just trying to think of, because we have a, you know, obviously there's a different timeframe of our fiscal year end, so this will impact, so we probably have a, a lower, lower sales tax number due to that deferral than in our current fiscal year. And then, and that's part of the, the reduction that they're projecting, or I'm sorry, it's reducing the reduction that they're projecting in next fiscal year, because we would collect revenue.
Yes.
Any further questions? Well, shall we continue then?
Yeah, sounds like it.
Okay. We have our originally, our original preliminary recommendations and updated version provided by member Leo and a comprehensive report provided by Vice Chair Johnson. I will take initial comments from each of you before we make any decisions.
So, excuse me, so just to be clear, we're on number two on the business calendar, which is finalize recommendations to the city council. And, and let me, I, I'd like to take the opportunity, if I may, to just walk you through the exhibits real quick. So your agenda packet includes six different exhibits to, for your reference in finalizing your committee recommendations to city council. Although it is dated information, you have our annual report of Measure X revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 1819. You can see there's a reference there that's, that's on page 13, so that you can flip to it quickly if you need to. On December 11th, the committee prepared preliminary recommendations for the city council. Exhibit number three, Vice Chair Johnson submitted a draft committee report to the city council. Exhibit number four, at the request of the committee, staff prepared graphics for your use. And exhibit number five, member Leo submitted a draft set of recommendations to the city council. And then finally exhibit six, we've attached the latest information which was presented to city council regarding the expected impact of coronavirus on general fund revenue. And that was an April 21st staff report to city council. So it is completely up to the committee to determine the format and content of recommendations you will submit to the city council. In addition, each of you is free to have discussions with the council member who appointed you and to provide your own recommendations to the city council in the form of public comment. So that concludes my quick summary and sorry about that, Chair Carpenter, I turn it back to you for committee discussion.
No, thank you for that. Very, very much appreciated. So yeah, let's open it up for discussion. Everything looks pretty good to me. I think my only complaint would be that it's, we didn't really outline the fact that two-thirds of the budget goes to safety. And that's going to continue going forward.
Chair Carpenter, do you want to give each of the committee members a chance to weigh in on which direction they think they would like to go? Because that may give you the opportunity to see where your consensus lies.
No, I understand, I appreciate that. I was just giving my opinion at this time and helping it up for discussion.
Sorry.
So yeah, that, yeah, no problem. But that was my only observation. I think both Tim and Leo have done an excellent job. The information is very good. And that's my comment on it. So yes, it's open for discussion, folks. Any other comments?
Hi, Chairman, this is Carlos, I would like to make a comment on that too.
Certainly.
I'm very, thank you also, member Leo and, and member Johnson for putting this together. Really appreciate that. I also want to express my, my, my support for adding overall where most of the money from, from, from this Measure X tax is going and to highlight that it is going to public safety. I think folks, members of the public will be, it will be important for them in terms of transparency as well. So I will be very supportive if the committee agrees to add that language in.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other members have care to comment?
Yeah, this is a member along, Lugo. If it's a good time, I was going to, um, you know, add my support to the work that member Johnson and member Leo did, put this together. I think it's a very good, comprehensive piece of paper that highlights at a high level the intentions of the committee and for those who are curious about the details, that they could dive in, start looking at the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is Tim. I mean, a couple of things. One, if I recall correctly, we were going to, and obviously, you know, C-19 has kind of thrown a wrench in a lot of this, but if I recall correctly, we were going to utilize the, the PowerPoint summary that, that, that member Leo put together, that's a, as I believe exhibit five in our agenda packet, to be kind of the talking, talking point type of a presentation for, for the, for the council. And then I think we were kind of wavering a little bit on the, what I think Executive Director Downs referred to as the comprehensive summary, which is the one that I put together as, as exhibit three, made some modifications in this for, for tonight's meeting, but, and, you know, provide that as the, you know, not, not necessarily a talking point, but, or a presentation to council, but more of a, a document to be presented to council as opposed to an oral, which I, I'm, I personally am, am still in favor of, of doing, you know, doing both, the, 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 member Leo's summary as well as then the comprehensive report that would get filed in terms of, you know, kind of detailing out the, which I think member Pereira as well as Lugo had, and actually I think Keith you also on the, the police, you know, the, the indicating where the money is going, which that is part of, I believe, the, the comprehensive presentation as well as obviously some other documents that the finance department has presented to council previously. But I think, you know, I would be in favor of continuing to make sure that the public is aware of where our, our, our Measure X money is being utilized. I would like to point out that the, that the summary that I put together, there are two, what I would consider to be kind of still areas that are still, still probably need to be finalized. And, and those are found on page 30 of 56 of the, of the agenda package in terms of, you know, the, you know, specific recommendations that we might have with, with regards to the actual budget for, for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. So if we recall, they're going to be starting that budget process right now at the council level, whereas finance departments obviously have been working feverishly in making all their adjustments based upon what's happened with, with the virus. But, you know, there's more items that we, you know, I think that entire section is probably pretty new, if I recall correctly. And so if there's more specific recommendations that we would like to, you know, to, to bring forth to council and the public, you know, I think that that would be a, a fair place to do it, as well as the summary of recommendations. If there's additional summary of recommendations and maybe, and I, and I didn't cross-check this, but kind of making sure that they align with the summary, the summary presentation that member Leo put together. But there's more specifically on the, you know, with our upcoming budget and speak, you know, what specific type of items are we wanting to, to say that we should be highlighting or recommending to council as priorities based upon what we've heard over the last Especially knowing that that entire section I think is, is pretty new. If I recall correctly, when, when, at our last meeting, I think I had the, you know, I had the 10-year general, the, the scary chart, as I call it, the one that has the expenses above revenue. I think that was in there, but the language, I believe, is new as well as adding in some of the additional constraints that we're feeling economically over this year, next fiscal year, as well as the year after that, because that's when the property taxes will, will hit the city. And then the year after that, when CalPERS, when the investment rate of return issues, that, that's when that will hit. So we have a four-year fiscal, four fiscal years that are really highly impacted from, from how I'm seeing it right now.
Yeah, this is Keith Carpenter. Yeah, I, I'm going to agree with you. That's what I, my understanding was that we would have the, the PowerPoint as the presentation and your document issued to the council as a document in, in advance of the presentation. That was my understanding of how it was going to go. And I would be, I'm in total agreement with that. Do we have any more comments from the other members?
Hi, this is member Landeverde. So thank you, member Johnson and member Leo for taking the time to do this. I'm sorry that I wasn't at the last meeting. I was not feeling good, but I'm good now. Just, I guess, I, I'm kind of going off what you guys said about the whole, making it aware about the whole money going to like the police. I was wondering, and this is kind of going to the staff, did we ever get like a report showing us putting that money to the, like to, to public safety? Did we ever get a report like showing, did that help increase? Like, did it like bring down the responses or anything like that? And kind of, I guess, yes, we want to like specify that most of the money went there, but also like, is that money actually like doing what it needs to do? Because I feel like, yes, we can like bash on it, but then at the same time, like, is it actually going where it's supposed, like, are we getting, like, are we, did we get anything from that? You guys, I know we, like, when we first talked to the, to the police in the beginning, they were supposed to like give us something, but I wasn't sure if they ever gave anything to you guys.
Um, yeah, I totally, I totally understand what you are asking about, member Landeverde. And no, we did not receive anything from the PD. And we, I, I have not seen any performance metrics from them.
Got it. Okay. Because, um, just so we can kind of, I mean, because if the money is going there, we just kind of want to make sure that, you know, we are seeing those responses go down, because I know that it's a concern for all of us. So I don't know if that's something going forward as a recommendation, that we can get that report just so everyone can see it. And at least if that money is going there, then we can see like the results in it, you know? So I feel like that would make everyone else feel comfortable that it's going to the right place and that we are getting what, like, that's out of it. But, yeah.
Hey, this is member Lugo.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I'm done. Sorry.
No, so, so I think it would be appropriate to get into the weeds with the detailed report first and then circle back with the summary presentation to ensure that's in alignment with the details. I think the areas of interest for everybody, because we all agree in the, in the opening statement and the data that's in front of it is really the departmental updates. If we start at page 26, where police department and then parks and rec and move on from there, we could go through the bullet points that were filled in and make sure that we all agree, which I've read through them and they look good. Maybe we could add some words here, take away some, but overall, it's, it's hitting the point. And then we could go back to the summary and make sure that the summary, uh, PowerPoint, like we all agreed, kind of hammers home our position and includes that, you know, statement about where the budget is going in regards to the police department. If everybody agrees, maybe we could just kind of get into that.
I think that's a great idea, this Johnson.
Me also, Keith Carpenter.
Okay. So let's start off with the police department. Again, we're kind of going through the, the meetings that we had with the different departments and what their major takeaways were. The police department, we could start off and four bullet points were added to this, to this deck. The first bullet point is PD felt that there was, that as more officers are hired, that response time will improve. That's the first. The second one is the committee was surprised that the police department did not have a response time goal to strive towards based upon new hires, which is very true. The third bullet point is the committee believed that the police department should develop... The third bullet point is the committee believed that the Police Department should develop a response time goal in order to provide accountability to the public. And the last is the committee was interested in any further pending hiring that would be needed in order to achieve improved response times. However, these are the amounts of money required and response time improvement should be measurable. One of the notes that I had for this particular section was that the Priority One response time was seven point seven three minutes. And we had asked the Police Department how we compare to other jurisdictions, which we didn't necessarily receive an answer on that also. But in doing a little bit of homework in, in response to this document, I think our closest neighbor, the City of Los Angeles, is a good barometer for us. And their response time for Priority One is six point one minutes, which is a one point six three delta between cities. Hard to compare one city with the next, but I believe that we should be afforded the ability to receive the same type of service in this city as those constituents and residents of the City of LA. If you guys agree, maybe we could add some of that data into this update.
This is Keith Carpenter. It makes sense to me. The other thing I think is kind of important too, and again, we need consensus on this, is what the cost for the police services per square mile versus the cost for the balance of the city services, the public service per square mile? I think that would be a really enlightening statistic to see.
Response time to square mile? Was that?
No, 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 the, the cost per police presence per square mile, if you have an X amount of dollars for the budget and you take the square miles of the city, you can kind of figure out what it costs per square mile for the, for the Police Department versus what the public service gets per square mile of city for their cost for services and understanding that the, the public, public service is taking care of streets and street lighting and sewers and water and on and on and on. And they have measurable goals that they presented to us, same with Parks and Rec, that they're trying to achieve, given, given the money they have. But I just think it's kind of interesting, the amount of dollar per square mile that's expended for police versus spent for public service, or public works, my apologies. I think that would be an interesting comparison to see.
Yeah, I think we're both talking the same thing then, because essentially what we're asking for is measurable goals. And
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, but based on, and again, I'm looking at if it's, if it's seventeen million dollars per square for the Police Department and one million dollars per square mile for the, for public work, there seems to be a disparity in the level of service between the two, considering Public Works takes care of a huge variety of things. Appreciate that the police have a, a big job, but again, my takeaway from all this and the discussions is there's no accountability on their side.
Yeah, this is Johnson. So I, I, I don't have any, any issue in terms of strengthening some of the comparability to other cities. You know, I hesitate a little bit on pointing out, you know, specific items because we're, you know, based on the data that we've been presented, we just don't have the data. I mean, we don't, don't have the comparability. And so I, you know, that might be, I think that that's, you know, the third, and I'm the author of this. So, you know, my intention with, you know, the third bullet point was be able to bring into, into play some of that, those comparables to where, you know, they, you know, I think we're all surprised, you know, that there were not, you know, goals and, you know, what, what is, what are they striving for? And how do they measure that? That we were surprised that that did not happen. And so I, I agree that with, you know, with, with member Lugo's comments in terms of, hey, we should be able to expect some, some accountability and measurability to this. So if we want to strengthen that, you know, maybe that third bullet point, that might be, might be the way to do that. I hesitate a little bit on saying, oh, your response time was XYZ compared to City of LA, because then, you know, then someone's just going to say, oh, well, the City of LA has, you know, this and that and the other to consider. It's a smaller, it's a bigger, it's a, you know, some of those types of scenarios. And just a couple of housekeeping points, I'm seeing two, two spelling type errors that hopefully Executive Director Downs or Sergio, you guys can correct before we send this final, final on. On the third bullet point, it needs to be committee instead of the committed, as well as then in the fourth bullet point, after however, in the second line, it would be however, the amount of money, so striking these out of that sentence. But getting back to the bigger point on the, you know, do we add in some stats or not? I'm, I'm okay with that. I just don't want it to draw apart to where sometimes you add something and then they, if they, if they can, if someone can tear it down, then essentially they just dismiss the entire point of that stat.
I agree with member Johnson. This is member Lugo. You're right, you know, and plus, we want this to be as positive as possible and driving home the, the point of asking for a goal and holding them accountable and asking for, you know, how to be able to be measured is, is ultimately the, you know, the intent of the, this section. So if we could maybe, I don't know, I don't know how to wordsmith it any better, but any, any suggestions?
This is Commissioner Leo. On the, in the second bullet, it says, the committee was surprised that the PD did not have a response time goal, nor offered a comparative goal to strive towards based upon new hires. Because I remember specifically, I, we, I asked about Anaheim, they said we couldn't compare it. And I believe it was Commissioner Lugo who said, well, what about a national standard? There's no shying away from the fact that they danced around our questions and were unprepared. And I, I felt almost like they were giving us the cold shoulder because they got a big fat contract and they didn't care that we were there to protect the public's money. So I'm not afraid to say what Commissioner Johnson said, which was, we were, we were surprised that the PD did not have a response time goal, nor did they provide a comparative goal when asked. I mean, we, two of us asked, and I think we all kind of sat there scratching our heads saying, hey, there's other similar cities. Are you telling me that there aren't similar cities? And so to me, I, I think if you just add a piece that said, did not have a response time goal, nor offered a comparative goal or standard to look towards. Because they didn't even point it in a direction to find one. Because if I'm reading this, whether it's the public or the city council, well, what is the goal? I mean,
Yeah, this is Keith Carpenter, and I agree with Lou on the point that what is the goal? I don't think a comparison really does us much good, because to Mr. Johnson's point, that's usually to tear it down. They got more of this, they have more of that, they have more officers, they have better, whatever it is. But I think your point was taken on, on, hey, what is your goal? You don't even have one, right? You didn't even state, you didn't bother to state one.
Yeah.
Right, okay, I'm, I'm fine with it, and I understand where Commissioner Johnson's coming from, because this is a comprehensive document. Can we just go through the department ones, and if we agree on each department's bullet points, then we can get to the summary sheet, and if there are things that need to be added, we can add it there, because it's easier, because it's an overarching document, because this gets into real specifics. And so if we just go by department out of department, if we're okay with the bullet points, then we can kind of move through the departments and then go to the summary document. Because in reality, Commissioner Johnson's document is very detailed, and if people want to dig into it, whether it's the media or staff, it's there. But you, we all know that the summary document is what people are going to use. I don't know how closely the city council reads the budget. I assume some do, some don't. So I'm just trying to figure out how we get through the departments and then get to the summary document, because the summary document is going to tell the story that we want to tell. And the, the proof of the story is Commissioner Johnson's report.
I agree. That's excellent. I totally agree.
Does that help?
Yeah, you have my support. I think, let's just ask this question, just to make sure it's closed. Are we adding to the third bullet point, or pardon me, the second bullet point, to your, to your earlier point, you had mentioned nor offered? Are we adding that to that language or not?
We, I, I, I trust, you know, since Commissioner Johnson drafted this, if, if he feels that it's, it's complete enough, let's just go through the bullets, and if we agree and if we want to add a couple of words, we can. But to me, the bullets are good summaries. Like, I look at that. All those points in there, one through four, they're all true. They're all absolutely true. Am I comfortable with all the language? No, but I'm okay with most of it, so I'm okay with it as it is. And if people really have an issue, we should raise it. But we can get through the bullet points, because I think all of us agree, when we sit through, when we read through these things, we kind of go, okay, no, that's the truth. So I, I don't have an issue in not changing it. How's that? It doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
This is Commissioner Lugo. No objections.
This is member Landa Verde. I'm good with the language that's on there.
This is Keith Carpenter. I'll defer to Mr. Johnson. If he chooses to change it, so be it. If he doesn't, so be it.
I, I'm fine changing it, because I mean, I think I kind of feel the same way as, as member Leo on, you know, or whoever brought up the point that they didn't, you know, they didn't offer anything either when we asked. So, I mean, I have, I have the doc, the word document in front of me that I, I just changed to where I wrote, the committee was surprised that the PD did not have a response time goal to strive towards based upon new hires, nor did they provide a goal or a comparable standard when asked for one.
Yeah. Hi, this is number. Um, yeah, sounds good to me.
Executive Director Downs, how, how do you want to keep track of, of document changes?
Since, I mean, I,
I'm fine doing it on my end?
Yes, you are fine doing it on your end, as long as the committee authorizes you to do so. And so if the committee basically says, yep, yep, we trust Vice Chair Johnson to make these changes that we've talked about during this meeting, and they authorize you to do that, then you're good to go to finalize it and get us a final, a final product. And then if you would like to also authorize staff to take care of like punctuation and spelling errors and things like that, that would be fine. No, no content change, just, just like I said, punctuation, spelling.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm comfortable doing that, for sure.
This is Keith Carpenter. I'm comfortable with that. Can we get a consensus?
Catherine, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, do we need a motion on this?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea for the record.
Okay, I propose a motion that we allow member Johnson to edit the document as she sees fit and allow staff to only edit punctuation and spelling errors.
And formatting.
Second.
And formatting. I'm sorry, my apologies. And formatting.
Second, this is Commissioner Leo.
Thank you.
I'll take, do the vote. Chair Carpenter?
I, I'm in agreement. I agree.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Landa Verde?
Yes.
Member Leo?
Yes.
Member Lugo?
Yes.
Member Pereira?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Well, shall we move to the next section, the Parks and Recreation and Community Service Agency? Can go through those bullet points? Okay.
Yes, please.
Any comments? I think it sounds good to me. This is Keith Carpenter.
Hi, this is member Pereira. I have a couple of comments on, on this section, if I may.
Certainly.
So I was, I was in person at the, at the meeting, I was a member back then, and I believe in, in the last committee member, meeting that we had, I raised the question around youth investment or youth services under the section, given that youth services is actually direct language from, from the ballot as well. And I mentioned, I believe I remember the city staff mentioned that there were about two million dollars or so allocated for, for youth investment, but I believe it was from general budget, not specifically to Measure X. So I just want to raise that issue again, because again, we, the ballot language says that there's investment for youth services, and other, it has apartment tenants, library, sous staff, and accountant. But youth services, it goes beyond that, right? I feel that a comprehensive youth development should include, right? Like, what are the workforce, youth skill programs that the city is promoting with, is, you know, the, the specific programs that, that the city is supporting for, for youth, healthy development? And I also believe I asked in the last meeting as well, if the youth or the Parks and Recreation Department had any metrics or goals as well. So I just wanted to follow up on that as well, if there was any response from, from that department.
Catherine, this is Commissioner Leo. There was, I think we, I think you responded in the meeting, and maybe this is a bullet point that will help Commissioner Pereira, is that there is, there are funds coming from the cannabis tax, right?
Yes.
That sit in account for youth services that, as far as I recall from the last meeting, they had not been expended yet.
Right.
Is, is that, is that correct, or am I forgetting?
No, you, you, you have it pretty much correct. I mean, I think there has been some spending, but not, not the lion's share of it.
So, so if we were to add a bullet point, if Commissioner Johnson was okay, we could add a bullet point in this section that says, in a subsequent meeting, youth services and funding from cannabis tax were discussed, or something like that. Because I understand where Commissioner Pereira is coming from about the fact that we should develop a youth services program and plan, and there is some funding to do that with that we've identified, that's not Measure X funds. So I don't know if that, if that works for people or not.
Well, in my opinion, it, it doesn't relate to us, because it's not Measure X funding.
Okay.
That would be my only comment on it.
Yeah, this is.
I appreciate the, go ahead, go ahead.
Listen, member Pereira, and I agree and I appreciate the, the comments around making sure that that is included. And I think it's also important to note, if, if the committee agrees that, again, going back to what was proposed to the voters and what was promised to the residents, right, that, that the money for youth services is going to, was going to be expended from, from Measure X funding, and if there is none, I think it's important to note that, again, funding for the regular services was not considered or needs to be considered, right, on, on, from the council as well for, for Measure X.
Yeah, this is Tim. I think member Pereira makes a good point in terms of, you know, going back to the ballot language. In hindsight, this is something we maybe should have spoke about more at that time. You know, although it's, it's hard to take, you know, with limited funds to be able to, you know, knowing that there is a bucket of funding available that is just hasn't been tapped yet. And knowing that this is, you know, obviously, general fund, all general fund type money, and that there's been reserves set aside for those youth services. For me personally, I mean, you, you always want to use those reserve, the, you know, dedicated type funds, you know, prior to, prior to this, but I, I don't know how to, you know, how, how do we put this into either a comment or a recommendation or a statement? So I'm open to, you know, open to other thoughts on it, you know, whether we're just saying that there, there is money available and other, other funds due to the cannabis or, or what have you, but.
This is member Lugo. So I was looking at this section, and I did make a similar note in respect to the first bullet point, where essentially the Parks and Rec Department and Community Services Agency does not have a where essentially the Parks and Rec Department and Community Services Agency does not have a master plan. You know, in, in the discussion that we're having now, what came to mind was the possibility of adding the youth and senior services as part of the recommendation to be included within, you know, the master plan. Because that essentially is what the Community Services Agency and Parks and Rec need to get done. It's not even done yet. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I'm not too sure how to, like Member Johnson had mentioned, how to tie that into the dollar, uh, the cannabis dollar that was discussed, but, you know, open for discussion. And, you know, I'm having a hard time like administratively tying that together also.
So, so maybe what you do is, Commissioner Johnson, you add a bullet point that says, um, uh, youth services need or, uh, discussed youth services master plan and potential funding. Right? Because really, we discussed it, but nobody knew any, nobody said much. And then when, when Commissioner Pereira brought it up again, um, Catherine said that there were some cannabis funds, but that was at a later meeting. But at, but at the previous meeting, I mean, at this meeting, we talked about youth, youth programs, we talked about lighting at the parks, just basic stuff. So you could add a bullet point that says youth services programs, um, were discussed and master plan may be needed. Because, right, this is a reference point for council members.
That, that's correct. Yeah, I, I, and that's kind of what I was, you know, have a couple of drafts of, of bullet points here, but, so how about the committee feels that youth and senior services needs to be highlighted as part of the Parks and Rec needs assessment and master plan. So essentially-
Okay.
You know, putting in something, you know, because, I mean, he, he's, you know, 100% right, it's, it's light. And it's specific in the ballot language. We know that they're working on a plan, so maybe if, and I would maybe defer to, uh, Member Pereira, if this, if, if this highlights your, your concerns or not, but by saying, you know, that, that the future needs assessment and master plan of Parks and Rec needs to include. And, and I, I agree with, uh, Mi- Mi- Member Lugo when he included the senior services in there, so that youth and senior services, you know, as part of that plan.
Hi, this is Member Pereira. I'll be very comfortable with that. I think that the intention overall will be to make sure that, that, the, the, that we raise the flag, right, that, that youth services and senior services as well, like, need to be also highlighted or given the proper attention on specifically under this Measure X funding. Again, going back to that, this is what was proposed to, to, to the residents of Santana.
Uh, this is, uh, Keith Carpenter. You know, I think the master plan, having that noted here is, is really essential, but because, again, that becomes a metric that can be used to see if, if the money is going where it's supposed to be going. If they say they're gonna do things and, you know, which would be outlined in the master plan, then we get some accountability. Because right now, you know, we have, we know the money, they need more money and it's going here and there, but if there is a master plan and they are allocated those funds, it's nice to know where it's going.
Okay, perfect. So I'll, I'll add that.
Excellent.
The next one was Public Works.
Yep. Okay, let's get down to here.
So we have two, two, two bullet points here with regards to the 7.1 million needed for street paving maintenance, as well as, uh, the maintenance of effort. I think that maintenance of effort, well, actually, all of these are new bullet points, and I was kind of taking from Executive Director Downs's summaries, but adding in the maintenance of effort in there also.
Member Johnson, is that, is that the same as Measure M money, the 2 million?
I believe it's Measure M2, and maybe Executive Director Downs, you could, is, are you in agreement with the statements that are being made here? But, and I think it is M2.
Yeah, it, it is, uh, it is Measure M2 that is collected and distributed to us by OCTA. And as part of collec, giving us that money, they have a maintenance of effort requirement and that we spend general fund money. So in order to get the restricted money, we have to spend general fund money. And, um, let's see, I'm glad this came in issue, yes, okay, however, yep. Um, well, yeah, that, and that may change again. So the OCTA had given us an estimate that our, um, let's see, that we would need to increase our maintenance of effort from, I think it was 7.8 million, up to a little, a little over 9 million. Uh, we did get that estimate from them. Uh, they are, may end up walking that back because of COVID-19. So, because their, their revenues are coming in less. Measure M2 is a countywide sales tax. And so if they're, they're, they're receiving less revenue, they're gonna pass on less revenue. So that means that they're reconsidering whether or not to increase our maintenance of effort requirement. Does that make sense?
That, that, that makes sense to me. I mean, we're, obviously, we're using approximate numbers here.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, I mean, we can only use what we have, the best, the knowledge of us today.
Kit, Kit, would you, Commissioner Johnson, would you, would you be okay if we added a bullet there that said, "Committee learned that very little, little general fund money was used for public works," I mean, for roads?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine doing that, uh, because most-
Because-
If, correct me if I'm wrong, but virtually all of our, um, actual road work is done through grant money, if I recall correctly, correct?
Right, and, and for me, that was the ah-ha moment. And I remember we asked Catherine and others about, like, is this normal? And no, it's not normal. So I wanted to add that bullet just as a generic point, because that was made, that's what Public Works told us. And, and they would be happy to receive additional Measure X funds to pave more roads based upon road longevity and that kind of stuff. But just a quick bullet point. And then on bullet point number two, Catherine, if, if Commissioner Johnson eliminated the, um, second sentence, um, would that be helpful, since we don't know what they're gonna come back with, but we know we're out of compliance?
Um, well, we're back in compliance right now. Um, so his, his first, uh, the first part of that second sentence is true. And, um, and maybe just, unfortunately, because we just don't know, maybe the second half of the sentence needs to be something along the lines of, you know, OCTA will be, will consider whether or not to adjust our, our maintenance of effort requirement, which may work-
Okay.
Which may or may not require more general fund spending.
Okay.
Um, so, you, you, I mean, do you think there's a possibility it won't require any additional spending?
Yes, I think that is a possibility.
Oh, okay, so I mean, it's substantial then?
Yes.
So how about if we just say, um, adjust, um, the second part of that, that bullet, or that second sentence became compliant and will be adjusting funding as directed by OCTA?
That would be fair.
Yeah, in, in my mind, I was thinking, oh, is it gonna be 1.28 or is it gonna be, you know, a million or 900,000, but it sounds like you think it's gonna be substantial. It's gonna be a, a, a major difference compared to the 1.2. Okay.
Okay, any other comments?
No, this is Member Lugo. I'm good with questioning. Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, yeah, let's go to the, uh, Planning and Building. Would that be correct, Mr. Tim?
Actually, it's CDA, Community Development Agency.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there's no bullets in there, because I think I only had one.
Yeah.
One item, so I, I did not do a bullet in that, in, in that. So the CDA is what, uh, I very confidently, their, their major item was, uh, their Quality of Life Team with regards to homelessness.
Okay. Yeah, seems pretty straightforward to me.
Hey, Member Johnson and team, um, committee, I should say, there was one note that I captured, and I'm not sure if this is, um, accurate, but I, I did capture saying something about staffing. Did CDA come in saying that staffing was an issue? And is it something worth including in the statement?
Um, CDA has, uh, most of their funding from federal restricted money. And those restrictions limit the amount of administration, which includes staffing to manage the programs and to run the programs. That's typically limited to 10% in, in most cases. And what's happening is because, um, you know, be, because of the amount of administration that's required for these programs, and I'm not just talking about pushing paper, I'm talking about actually, you know, making sure that the dollars get spent. Like for, I'll just give you an example. The last couple of weeks, uh, CDA staff has been working very hard to push out a bunch of business grants, small business grants. And, and so they have to have staff to work these programs, and they're limited to 10% of their revenue in most cases. And so they, that 10% is just not enough to pay for the staffing required. And, um, so I know that they have historically, uh, known that they, they've got a tidal wave coming, and I, I know those are strong words, but they're be, basically being squeezed out, meaning that the general fund, if, if, if the city wants to continue providing these federally funded programs, assistance programs, then the, then the, the city council is going to have to allocate some general fund money to help administer those programs. I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Sorry, I took a long time to say it.
So are, am I, am I hearing you correctly in saying that, I mean, the, it's possible that the, the cult team would not, would not, would cease to exist? Unless the general fund is, is funding them?
Uh, no, no, that's not it at all. I'm talking about, um, is, one of the members brought up that CD, I think it was, uh, Member Lugo, you had a note that CDA talked about staffing, and so I was just trying to provide some color on what your, your note that you had taken probably referred to. No, that, I'm not saying that about the Quality of Life Team at all. The Quality of Life Team is pretty much 100% paid, or maybe not 100%, but it's primarily paid for with general fund money. Uh, Quality of Life is not a federal program.
So is it worth discussing whether or not the Measure X dollar should be used to supplement the Quality of Life Team staff? Because I, that's, I guess that's where, and I apologize, the note wasn't more detailed, but it sounded as though their staffing is low and they needed more staff.
Yeah, their, their staffing shortfall is in their administration. So I, I think that, I think maybe there's two concepts that are being confused here. So there's Measure X funding for Quality of Life Team, and you could recommend to keep it the same, increase it, decrease it, whatever. And as a second recommendation, if you are interested in, you know, um, how should I say? Interested in supporting CDA's request that they get more staff for administration, but that's administration of federal programs, restricted money. Nothing to do with Quality of Life and, and that, yeah, that's it.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or should we move on? Okay, I guess we're ready to move on to Planning and Building Agency.
Those points look good.
I agree.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Lugo. I agree.
Any other comments? Well, shall we move on to voter intention versus implementation?
And I don't remember if this is new language or was existing language at the last meeting or not, quite honestly, and I, I don't have my old one in front of me, but.
We gotta, we gotta type on the last sentence first paragraph. I think it's supposed to be funeral. We got funeral revenue purposes, I think it's supposed to be general. I think it is a funeral in some ways, but hey, there you go.
I got the second typo and the second sentence of the first intended purpose. Oh goodness, this must be new stuff, because I can tell I didn't spell check it, so.
The rest of it reads fine, Tim.
Okay.
The, the last paragraph, uh, I like, um, I just think we could be a little stronger in saying we need, uh, quantitative results from everybody. Again, they're getting a lot of money and, and, you know, nobody's saying, hey, we're gonna do X, Y, and Z. And again, that goes back to the master plan. Um, I think that's essential for all these departments, and particularly the police department, because they, again, have offered nothing. Um, so that, that would be my only comment, that, you know, the departments that are receiving this Measure X money come up with master plans that, uh, gives the residents, um, some kind of measurability.
So, so what if we added to the first sentence, Commissioner Carpenter, further, "We believe that the voters would like to see some tangible results with, with, with quarterly metrics of the Measure X spending, such as blah, blah, blah."
Something along that line. I, I, I'm not so sure quarterly is, is, um-
Well, we get the sales tax, yeah, but we get the sales tax quarterly, and the money's gonna be spent quarterly. And so if you don't want quarterly, maybe biannually, maybe twice a year.
I think biannual, again, to me, the master plan kind of-
Okay.
Be into that, right? You say we're gonna improve six bathrooms in the park. Okay, where are you at, right? Um, you know, we're gonna reduce our response time by a minute and a half. Okay, where are you at? Um, because again, in, in my mind, we're giving all this money, we, but we are in, in reality, the public is giving the money to the, to the council and the city. But as you pointed out numerous times, there's no accountability from anybody. The street one is pretty easy to see, right? You get the money, you spend it, you fix the streets, and you get your additional money. But for everybody else, uh, you know, and they're, they're saying all these things they want to do and would like to do. Um, but again, the, no plan, no, no accountability in my mind.
So then maybe some tangible results semi-annually, so that would be twice a year.
That makes sense to me.
Cause then, cause then the council and- Cause then, cause then the council and Catherine and those folks can say, all right, well, we have some money here. We can move it over here to help such and such department meet their metric for the end of the year kind of deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you know, again, in my mind, you just keep giving these people money and they spend it and, and there you go. Well, what'd you do with it? Well, we spent it here, we spent it there. And again, if you go back to the, the language of the, of the ballot measure, we're supposed to have some measurable improvements. And, and without any kind of metric, we don't have that. We just have people getting more money to do as they please with.
Agreed.
This is Member Lugo. I will say that I like the word also. You know, to be clear though, we are taking a somewhat of a passive stance in the statement. It's not a aggressive stance. And maybe aggressive isn't necessarily the right words, but when you add words like we believe versus removing it and just saying the voters require, I think that there, there's two tones that we would be taking. So just please, everybody, which I'm okay with, but be aware that we're taking a somewhat of a passive stance when it comes down to the language, the way we're presenting it as it is.
And I personally not in particular favor of that. I think it needs to be a little bit pointed. In my mind, there's too much passiveness in, in what happens and nothing changes, unfortunately, and that's in my opinion.
Okay, well, I added some language in terms of a semi-annual reporting, be able to measure those tangible results. And captured all the spelling errors I'm embarrassed about right now, but.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, do we want to move on to the fiscal year 2021 upcoming budget and COVID-19 constraints?
Yes, this section obviously was a, you know, this is a, I think all of the copyright in this is, is 100% new. As well as obviously adding in the C19 language, which was not even really on our radar prior to our last meeting, so.
I think that chart's great. I'd like to see it bigger and bolder though. No, seriously, I mean, it, it should jump out at you because that's, that's important information right there.
Well, the worst thing is this will not be the first time or the last time that, that council sees this chart, so.
Yeah, yeah. And this is before the COVID even, wow.
That's right. So I mean, I, I think just my, my personal opinion is I don't know if we want to add in specific recommendations. Like I put in the, in the highlight section at the very bottom. And I'm not sure if, if everyone was at the, was able to look at the budget and some of those types of things that the finance team put together for the city, but it's a, you know, you know, I don't think we're going to be telling them anything that they, that Director Downs hasn't told them before. But, you know, it does highlight the, the need of, you know, one time versus recurring spending because our recurring spending is going to really hurt us right now. And I think, you know, and of course I'm writing this, so I mean, from my, my bias on this is probably shines through in the second to last paragraph. Where I say the, I think, second to last sentence, the, the point is that even if the state opens back up, this is not a short-term economic crisis, but one that will take a number of years to come out for, for the city. As such, long-term solutions are needed to control expenditures as well as increase revenue. And so, you know, just being honest with my bias, so that's my personal, personal bias and personal opinion. But, you know, it's not anything that we have heard at the committee level, I don't believe. Especially because as it relates to, 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 to the virus and the economic calamity that's happening right now. But, so I mean, I'm not, and if we want to change language, I am, you know, this is first, first run-through on, on my end, and I don't want necessarily, if, if that's a bias of just Tim, that, you know, I, I'm more than happy to adjust things as, as the feels fit.
Well, I share your bias, Tim. This is Keith Carpenter, and I do share your bias. I think it is going to be a long road. The economy is not all lights which you turn on and off. It's more like a fire that has to be restarted. So I think we're in for the long haul.
All right, and I was going to say something similar, Chairman Johnson. Commissioner Johnson.
Do you have a comment on that?
I mean, my only, I, my, you know, again, I go back to specifics and, you know, like my last sentence here, the conclusion there. We urge the city to work on ways of rein in recurring spending. And well, you know, that entire, it's like, well, duh, you know, like, of course. That's what I mentioned at all times, you know, and so I don't know if there's any, any specifics that we would like to add in there. But, you know, because, you know, it's, it's kind of stating the obvious. And, you know, something that, of course, Director Downs has brought for them, you know, many times, I'm sure, so.
And they run over it like it's not even a speed bump. So I think that your sentence is appropriate. I think we just have to keep hammering home the point that we are all concerned about recurring spending. It's, it's a given. And when you appropriate funds for four, five years at a time, you give yourself no flexibility when things like this come up. I have no idea how they're going to extricate themselves from the police contract. No idea. Yes. You, what you stated about the pensions and the costs, I'm sure Catherine has preliminary numbers. From what I've heard from my state friends, it's worse than what you can imagine. So if it's worse than what you can imagine, there's no way out of this but to cut. I know there's rumors about they want to push a bond through, that's an additional tax on the resident. That statement is appropriate and it needs to keep happening until they follow it, until they hear it. So I'm okay with what you wrote, Tim.
I, I would add in addition to Mr. Leo's comment, could we change that to we strongly urge?
I'm, I'm fine with that. That sounds good.
Okay, any other comments or do we want to move on? Okay, planning for sunset, okay, yeah, planning for sunset.
Yeah, so again, this is, I think, brand-new language here. That is, you know, just highlighting the, the fact that I think we, we've spoken about this before. You know, especially as it, as it relates to one time versus recurring, is that this is not forever money, forever revenue coming in, that we have a step down and then a sunset altogether. And so I think the point of, of this was continuing to, you know, if we're relying upon Measure X for recurring revenue, that we should really be, we're probably going down the wrong path.
Agreed.
I think we need to add the word at behind critically.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. And continues, last paragraph, second sentence.
Which one was that one? Oh, I got it.
Continue, yeah. No, that's great. That sounds good, especially that long-term part. Any other comments on that section? Okay, Measure X reporting requirements segregation.
So this, I think this section was trying to, you know, essentially kind of bring to light some of the challenges that I think the, the finance group has in terms of, you know, segregating the, the Measure X spending, knowing that this is all general fund money. And, you know, and weighing that with the, with the reporting requirements that Measure X require entails. Let's see.
I think it's fine. I think it puts home, I'm sure, I'm sure Catherine's had discussions with them, like, I can't segregate it out. I can't create a separate fund. So this is kind of how it's going to have to go. And let the council wrestle with how they want to report it out publicly.
Okay. And then I think, I'm sorry, I moved on before, I don't know if anyone else has any comments on that section.
No, I think it looks good. I like your term shell game. I think that's great. Okay, summary of recommendations.
In the summary of recommendations, I believe that the, the only one that I added, and I think this is where I probably would need a cross-reference to the, the, the power, the slide deck presentation, the summary presentation, I think I added this last bullet. And Catherine, maybe you can, you know, remind, remind me or ask, you know, whether in the, in the budget cycle, if we're continuing to, or if you, if, if you are, you know, providing a, you know, kind of a Measure X summary with the 2021 upcoming budget, is that part of your budget presentations or?
Absolutely.
All the way grouped in together?
Yeah, we, we will absolutely present a Measure X summary of spending.
Okay. Is that required by the ballot or by the ordinance?
Well, it's not expressly required, but, but the thing is, it would be hard to comply with the other requirements of the ordinance if we didn't, such as the audit.
Okay. And I got the spelling error in that one. So, so I, I mean, I don't know if that, if that needs to be, you know, as part of it, if it, if it goes to as large of a summary of recommendations point or, or not, but. And I, I think I, uh, okay, and then. So I don't know if we want to, if there's anything else that we want to highlight here, or maybe if we, it might be even easier to look at Member Leo's slide deck, you know, kind of just make sure that these two are married, married together on the summary.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Shall we go to the slide deck then?
Hi, this is a member, can I add a potential suggestion for the summary recommendations?
Sure.
Just wanted to see if it'd be consistent with the, some of the things that came up on Police Department and Parks and Recs for the summary recommendations that committee recommends city to have outcomes metrics from departments presented for use to Measure X funding.
I think that's a great recommendation. Because I think that, that kind of comes across multiple agencies, even though I think, you know, we can agree that the police department is probably the one that we've spoken the most about. Would it, would that be similar to the, let's see, the second to bottom bullet point here? Or do we need stronger language in there? So the each department should have a baseline?
Yeah.
Yeah, like that sounds good.
Member Preya, is that, does that second to last bullet point, the one that's on our screen here, is that, does that meet your, you know, kind of, kind of expectation there or does it need a different language?
No, no, that's, that's great. Thank you.
The, the one, the one on here that I, I kind of, you know, waffled a little bit with after the, you know, the COVID-19 budget struggles and is the, you know, in terms of the assessment of the city's reserve levels, the second bullet point on here. However, I, I think I've convinced myself that I still would like to have that in there, even though we probably will be utilizing, you know, some, some of those reserves to be able to move forward, which, you know, quite honestly, that's what reserves are, are for. Is, you know, for these crisis-type times. So I mean, I, I personally think we'd still like to have that in there, but.
Any other comments? Do we want to discuss the notes from department presentations or do we want to go to the slide deck? What's your guys' choice?
The notes was something that we just provided to serve as a reminder to the, to the committee as to what was discussed. But obviously Vice Chair Johnson has captured all of that in his report. So at this point, I would recommend that you just move on to the Member Leo's submission, which was on pages 40, 42, 43, and 44 of your agenda packet.
Okay, give me a second here.
Yeah, so I'm going to marry, I'm going to marry up my, the detail, the comprehensive report with the recommendations that we come upon with on page 44 of the agenda packet. So this is FYI, I'll just marry those up.
Okay, any comments on the Assistant Oversight Committee role, the bullet points there?
No. Hi, this is a member, not to disrupt the flow of the meeting, but just wanted to announce that I have to leave the meeting at 6:00 PM in about two minutes. But I review the, the section and then have no further comments on that. Thank you everyone for your work and Johnson and a member Lugo for putting a lot of this together, and Leo.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim is fine with, with the, the slide, the slide 42.
Okay, I'm fine with it also. Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to committee concerns.
This is Johnson again. So my only, my only thing on here would be, you know, do we want to add anything with regards to changes that might be occurring due to the virus, the economic downturn with regards to the virus? Or, you know, I think all these points are valid with or without the virus. It's just, you know, it's more important now.
My opinion, we leave them alone, because again, as you just stated, it's, they're valid with or without the virus. So in my opinion, I'm good with it.
Yeah, I was, I was, this is committee member Lugo, I was looking at, looking at it with the lens of the virus, and all this still applies. I think it's good.
Okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to committee preliminary recommendations.
Catherine, is that, is the statement, the two-thirds statement, is that a correct, is that an accurate statement? I just want to make sure that that goes by, you know, from your, you know, is that passed your test?
It's a fair statement. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I know that we've thrown that around before, but I just want to make sure it wasn't just, you know, we start seeing it, and we think it's true, and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've even heard some council members from the DIES refer to this as well, so.
Okay.
A quick comment on that, Keith Carpenter. Do we want to put in the dollar amounts there, that, you know, the 20 million went to service the debt and that type of thing? Do we feel any value in that, or we just want to keep it the fractional?
I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, change anyone else's opinion, so feel free to express differently, but I personally like the two-thirds better than a dollar amount, but I'm not married to it, but I just think it's, you know, as an accountant, to me, that means, you know, that's a, that's a, that's a fair share. It's a big share.
No, agreed. Yeah, it's just, just throwing it out there. If everybody's okay with it, then we run with it. We're all good with that, then?
Yeah, to be honest, I'm good either way. I think both are valid, but I'll go with the majority, because I think, I think we could go either way, to tell you the truth. I'm a bit torn about it. I think it's a good point, but at the same time, I like the, I like the simplicity of two-thirds, because they will, meaning the City Council, will know how much money that is. They should know, at least.
Yeah, but my only reason for bringing that up is from the citizen point, to know that, yeah, X, you know, 20 million bucks went to service debt, and we left a $10 million to do whatever. That was my only concern. Again, so this is not strictly for the City Council, in my opinion, but again, that's my opinion.
Keith, when you say, you know, 10 and 20.
I'm just throwing numbers out there.
Okay.
No, I'm just giving examples. Yeah, no, I leave the exact figures to you, man. You're the accountant.
I'll defer to Director Downs and Sergio.
There you go.
What does a member, Landa Berde, I know we haven't heard, you speak up on this, but what's your opinion on that?
No, I think, coming from a financial background too, I think the two-thirds is more impactful. I mean, just the numbers thrown out there, I'm not, I wonder if, like, how, if as a citizen, and you look at it, you're just going to be like, okay, what is that compared to? I think that two-thirds, like how you said, does make an impactful statement, to me. So I agree with you. I would, I would keep it that way, but again, what everybody else wants.
Could we put the dollar amount parentheses behind that? Is everybody okay with that? Because I don't know two-thirds of that, of that money is. When you tell me two-thirds, I mean, of what, 100 bucks? I mean, you know, that's, that's only my take, and again, I'm the non-accounting person here, so. That's, we'll go consensus on this. I'm not pushing my agenda here. That's just my take on it.
No, no, I think it's a balance.
What would that number be? I mean, if we're, I mean, obviously, two-thirds of 60 million, you know, is that what it is, or would it be, you know, from an approximate perspective?
Does the committee, hi, this is Sergio, does the committee maybe just want to add approximately two-thirds? I mean, if you're thinking about it, the Measure X money may change year over year, but obviously, for the current fiscal year, 1920 was 60 million, so two-thirds would represent 40 million.
Right.
So are we talking about it reading two, two-thirds of 60 million Measure X revenue was used to balance?
I was thinking, this Keith Carpenter, we'd have two-thirds, and then the 40 million in parentheses, if that makes sense. But again, let's go with consensus.
And is that, I just want to make sure we're looking at this correctly. So the two-thirds, and are we crossing over between eight, so this is the 1819 budget, was I think saying that two-thirds was, was to, you know, the fourth bullet on page 43, and is that, is that the same, are we referencing to the same on the last bullet of what is up on the screen right now with the recommendations?
All I have in front of me is the committee's preliminary recommendations. I don't know what's up on the screen.
And this is where I think I'm questioning whether, you know, that, from the accuracy perspective of whether, if we're mixing, you know, the two-thirds from the, from the prior slide, which says two-thirds of Measure X revenue was used to balance the 1819 budget to maintain existing service levels, and then we flip to the last point, or what's on the screen right now on slide 44, since two-thirds of Measure X funds was used to fix a structural deficit. The city should work to eliminate underlying deficit, da-da-da-da. Are those the same? Are those referencing to the same data points of two-thirds of 1819, or is it two-thirds of 1920 also?
I got to admit, I was under the impression that, that it was referencing the same data point, 1819.
Yeah, I was also.
Yeah, that's how I took it.
Okay. So, and that's where, when Sergio, when you said two-thirds of the 60 million, I'm not sure if that's a, if that's an accurate data point or not.
Yeah, based on the revenue.
Yeah, based upon projected revenues, Measure X was supposed to be approximately $60 million a year. So if it's $60 million a year, two-thirds of that is 40, went to fix a structural deficit, and as we all know on the committee, there was no real attempt to listen to staff and make cuts last year. They just added stuff to it.
Right.
So they let the 40 million fill the hole, and then added stuff to it, even though, if I recall correctly, staff made a recommendation of, we could cut about 2.1 million, and then council said, well, just wait for Measure X. They took the Measure X funds and spent it, 40% filled the hole, and then spent most of the rest of it.
Yeah, the, the two-thirds really does relate to the fiscal year 1819, which was, you know, the one quarter of revenue, approximately 15 million, and prior to the passage of Measure X, there was a planned $10 million use of the general fund reserve. So 10 million is two-thirds of 15 million. I'm not sure that it is fair to say that two-thirds of Measure X funds for 1920, on an annualized basis, two-thirds of 60 million or 40 million was used to fix a structural deficit. If you refer back to page 17 of your agenda packet, you'll see that there were quite a few things that were added into the budget to comprise the 60-plus million of spending, and not all of them were structural deficit, nor, nor it may it be fair that two-thirds of that was structural deficit. So I think, I think if you're going to use the two-thirds, I think it would be more accurate to refer to specifically to the 1819.
Yeah, and I think that's where my hesitation was, in terms of accuracy of the data.
So all you have to do is add, since two-thirds of the 2018, 2019, 2018 hyphen 19 Measure X funds were used to fix a structural deficit, right?
What slide are you referring to? 43 or 44?
Whatever Catherine's got on the screen, 44. On 44, it says, since two-thirds of the Measure X funds, right? She just said, since two-thirds of the 2018 hyphen 19 Measure X funds were used to fix a structural deficit, the city should work to eliminate the underlying deficit, which, by Catherine's numbers, was about $10 million. God knows what the underlying deficit will be next year.
Right. And I think, you know, the point, the point, I'm sorry, but.
I say, again, you know, arguing the finer point of the budget is correct, but do we want to put a dollar amount in there, or do you guys want to just run with the fraction?
No, okay, this is Commissioner Lugo. I'm more married to adding a dollar amount to it, more so because of what we're discussing. Yeah, I think it's important to point that out. I like the fraction, but the fraction's difficult to follow if you start digging into the 1819 versus the overall Measure X revenue that came in. My opinion, just throwing it out there.
I agree.
But what, but what is that dollar, is I guess my question, because.
10 million. Catherine said approximately 10 million.
All right.
Yeah, 10 million for fiscal year 1819. For fiscal year 1920, we don't, we don't really have a subtotal on that. I really am trying to help you here. If you look on page 16 of your agenda packet, you'll see that there is a summary chart that has the total amount of spending by ballot label category, and you'll see that there's a 29 million total on unrestricted general purposes. And some might say, oh, well, that 29 million, that represents a plug for the deficit, but not necessarily so, because then when you flip to page 17, and you look at what makes up some of that unrestricted general revenue purpose, you'll see that those, some of those items are actually increasing service levels. They're just not increasing the service levels that fit into the buckets expressly identified in the ballot language. So for example, 550,000 was added for a bus shelter program. That's a new service, and probably a lot of people would agree that it's a good thing, but it doesn't fit neatly into one of those ballot language buckets.
Okay, so I think, I'm fine on putting that, as long as we're doing the 10 million, as opposed to utilizing 40 million, a two-thirds of 60 million, because I just don't know that we can accurately say that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So since two-thirds, so it should read, since two-thirds of the 2018 hyphen 19 Measure X funds, parentheses, $10 million, was used to fix a structural deficit, the city should work to eliminate whatever that underlying deficit. That $10 million was plugged with Measure X, and Catherine, we didn't, we didn't just, the next year, we just didn't say, we didn't fix that hole, we just let Measure X fill the 10 million and kept going, right?
That's a fair statement.
Yeah, because we didn't cut 10 million and do change programs. So that's, so basically, they took 10 million, basically fixed their, the structural deficit, and then instead of cutting 10 million and then redoing the bus shelters, which may be a good program or something else, they just kept spending instead of fixing that underlying deficit. So to this day, that, that, that hole that was patched by Measure X hasn't been fixed. I'm guessing it'll get fixed in the next budget discussions. There's no doubt about it. Did that work for everybody? I get your 10 million, I get your year in there.
That, that, that works for Johnson.
Works for me.
I'm not the author. I don't have the slide deck, so someone else will be, you know, writing that, but I'm fine with the language that you just said.
Okay. Because it is a data point, it's a firm data point from Catherine, and it's a fair statement that that underlying deficit was filled by Measure X, and it hasn't gone away, and thank God, we have some Measure X funds, because the next budget will be tougher.
Actually, I guess what we could do is I could, since I'm marrying this up with the comprehensive one, that then we could, let's see, either I could edit the slide deck, but I don't have the original, or Catherine, you can take my summaries, which will marry up to this, and then, and then replace in the slide deck.
We can send you the slide deck, the PowerPoint.
Perfect. So I can write that up to where I'll be including the fiscal year and the, and the 10, you know, approximate $10 million in there.
Okay.
All right, perfect. So do we, is there anything more on this, or should we vote? And so.
I have no further comments. But yeah, I think we're good for a vote. Anybody else? Any other comments?
No, this is Commissioner Lugo. No, and thank you. That was a very healthy discussion.
This is member Landa Berde. I'm good with it.
All right, well, I would, I would make a motion to approve the, the comprehensive summary, as well as the PowerPoint summaries, as we've discussed this evening.
Second motion.
For me to send those revisions to, to Executive Director Downs.
Okay, I'll second it. Keith Carpenter.
I'll take a roll call. Chair Carpenter?
I'm for it.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Landa Berde?
Yes.
Member Leo?
Hi.
Member Lugo?
Yes, thank you.
Member Pereira? Has left. So we, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. That was in our business calendar. I'm sorry, go ahead.
As a, as a point of reference, I think that's, we're almost done, but I wanted to make sure that we understand timing. So Director Downs, I believe that you probably have to submit the, our report with the agenda packet in very short order here. So what, what's, when do you need this information? Well, actually, you're going to want to read through it also, so you're going to need time on your end. So what is your timeframe?
Is it possible to get it to me by the end of tomorrow?
That's fine.
Okay, that'll work for us. And I've already sent you the PowerPoint.
I see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are we ready to continue? Any other comments? Okay, that was the end of the business calendar, and now we will take public comments for an item not on the agenda. Do we have any comments?
Keith, can you ask them to, can you read from the script to ask in the press, star nine, if they would like to?
Oh, yeah, it's not on this part, but yes. If the public has a comment, please press star nine, and the staff will recognize you and allow your comments.
We have some attendees that nobody is wishing to speak.
Okay. Shall we move on? Does the staff have any additional comments to make? Does the staff any, have any additional comments to make?
Yes, I would just like to thank the committee for all of your hard work, your dedication and your service, the, you guys. It's very obvious that you all care a lot, and we really appreciate it, and thank you again for your hard work.
Well, thank you. Do we have any final comments from committee members before we adjourn the meeting? And I'll run down the list here, Pereira has left us, is that correct? Member Lande Verde, do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments, just thank you to everyone for all the hard work, for the members that put so much work into this, and also the staff for always being there and supporting us, and yeah, that's it.
Member Lugo?
Thank you everybody for your time and effort into this, stay safe out there, and I look forward to the next time we have an opportunity to sit in the same room and do this meeting.
Thank you. Member Leo?
I appreciate everybody's work, I, I think we can all be proud of the work we did digging through everything. And let's see how it goes, thanks.
Thank you. Vice Chair Johnson?
Yeah, I, I would echo everyone's sentiments, you know, the staff, you guys did, did a phenomenal job, I think, educating us, answering all of our questions, always being available, you know, obviously with everything going on with the, the virus, and, and the challenges of the city, and as well as other cities in the, this, this, the nation are going to be facing. You know, I think our, our work is more important than ever, it's finance type folks, so just offering you guys encouragement, and that what you are doing is, even though it's tiring and, and probably ever-changing every day, just offer my, my encouragement to you, thanks.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll echo the same sentiment, I really want to thank the members Leo and Johnson for their hard work on the, the presentation. I think you guys did a great job, I think you captured all of our feelings and opinions. And again, to the staff, the information you provided has been fantastic, and couldn't do it without you. And if we have no other obligations or objections, would like to adjourn until June tenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.